Good morning, everyone. Apologize for the late start. We had a few little technical difficulties. Called the Board of Supervisors meeting of August 7th to order. Supervisor Rotifer will lead us in the pledge of the flag. And then I'd like to have a few moments of silence for the ones that lost their lives in the recent fires. So Supervisor Rotifer?
Yes, please join me. In these difficult times, sometimes it's hard to remember, but we do live in the greatest nation on earth. And please join me in a pledge allegiance to that flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oral communication. The public may speak on any item that is not on the printed agenda. Two minutes, please.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members, and the public. I'm Gary Stockel. I am here today as our air pollution control officer and just wanted to make a public announcement that on behalf of Dr. Berenstein here in the audience, our public health officer, we are re-releasing our health advisory for poor air quality due to our smoke impacts. This has worsened since we've got a fire going now in our own county, the Donnell Fire. We are seeing regional impacts from the Ferguson Fire and been seeing those for weeks now. But we're also seeing impacts from both the Carr Fire up near Redding and the Mendocino Complex. That smoke is coming through Sacramento Valley all the way down into San Joaquin Valley. It's washing up into the foothills with the heat going up our river canyons as the day progresses and then goes back down and is adding to our cumulative impact to the fires that are right to the south of us, the Ferguson Fire in Yosemite National Park, and now the Donnell Fire up above Donnell Reservoir. The advisory is basically the same. The public needs to be aware of potential health impacts. We have a general chart that goes by visibility distance because we do not have very monitors, very many monitors here in the county, although we are getting an additional monitor on Wednesday. And we'll be placing that for some additional data on particulate matter 2.5. Some special kudos to MyMotherload.com and the Union Democrat for providing information to the public, but especially MyMotherload.com. On their homepage, they now have a gauge that shows air quality. If you click on that gauge, they have quite a page developed that provides information about smoke impacts. It includes a link to webcams in the county where if you want to travel to a particular area, you can actually call up that webcam and take a look for yourself as to what the smoke quality is doing. There are a number of websites that are available to the public that will show smoke impacts in the county. One is Air Now. Just simply Google the words "Air Now," which would be with no space. Look at their wildlife incident map, and they'll have monitors that are reading those measurements from official monitors. Airfire is another one that you can Google, just those two words, "Airfire." Look at their wildfire tools, and you'll again see some good tools. Another one that has a modeling is Blue Sky, and that's on Airfire's website. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm here to make an announcement and to offer an invitation. Two other women and I have started a fundraising committee for the senior center. As some of you know, the senior center is having some difficulty meeting its budget. It no longer offers meals on Tuesdays. So each third Saturday of month, we will be having a fundraiser at the senior center. The first one in September will be a bongo blowout. The next one is going to be a community potluck. Then we're going to have a hoedown. December, putting on the rids. So I would like to cordially invite all of you and members of the public as well to attend these and support our fundraising efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors all. My name is Amy Falken. I'm a resident in District 3 of Ponderosa Hills. Supervisor Royce, good morning. I'm here to respectfully request that you consider everything we've heard about the general plan being voted on so close to our elections. For those of us who have an incoming new supervisor, I respectfully request that you consider just holding off a little bit so that our new people don't get saddled with something you voted for, that the rest of us, it might not be in our best interest or it might not be in anybody's best interest. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, good morning. My name's Adina Nance, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. We are here today, several of us, to implore you to implement a countywide rooster ordinance. I moved here to live amongst the beauty, peace, and quiet of the mountains. I love it here. That is until last fall, when I had new neighbors move in next door to me. It started out with barking dogs 24/7. So I went next door, introduced myself, and asked them if they could please do something about the dogs. He just chuckled, looked at his girlfriend, and said, "Well, the neighbors are really going to hate it when the chickens get here." I didn't think much of it. I used to have chickens myself. No big deal. But wow. Little did I expect that he moved in over 100 roosters. Now, every day between the dogs barking and the roosters, which start at 4:00 in the morning, mind you, and go until past the sundown, the dogs go 24/7. So I can't even leave my doors and windows open at night to let the cool breeze come in, even if we didn't have fires. So I've found that the dog, I've even found one of their dogs in my backyard. It's absolutely nerve-wracking. I filed several complaints with animal control, the police department, the planning compliance department. This man has moved in and destroyed the peace and quiet of our neighborhood, and he obviously does not care. I've even thought about moving, but why should I have to move? Why is it that I can't have peace and quiet on my own house, on my own property? Besides that, who on earth would want to move in next door to this? I'm sure it's cut my property value at least in half. I've been following up with the animal control and the DA's office on a regular basis. All they can tell me is that there's an open investigation. So in the meantime, I thought I'd chip away at this one bit at a time. First being to drive implementation of a rooster ordinance. Solano County has done this, so why can't we? I am submitting Solano County's rooster ordinance as a good starting point, and I implore you to help driving putting this or something very similar to this in place.
Okay, thank you. Let's, here are two minutes.
And here's documentation.
Yes, thank you.
Morning. My name's Terrell Deech. I've lived on my property since, I've lived on my property at 14541 North Ridge Road for almost 40 years. I purchased the land for its location, the views, and the relatively quiet that one expects in a rural atmosphere. For many years, we've enjoyed peaceful mornings, soaks in the hot tub, dinners on the deck. And because we had no AC, we sleep outside at night when it's hot. These are the reasons we live here and the kinds of people, the kinds of things that most people seek in a rural area. Unfortunately, this all came to a halt September 2017 when the property adjacent to ours changed hands. Since the neighbors moved in with over, estimated over 100 chickens, mostly roosters, the noise has been unbearable. The crowing begins two and a half to three hours before sunrise and continues until after sunset. Since they moved in, we have not had one day's respite from this god-awful noise. We've been subjected to 10 months of continuous noise daily basis. The hot tubs drained, any activity on our deck is unenjoyable, and walks around the property are more stressful than they are relaxing. We understand that the county has no noise ordinance. We also understand that the property owner's zoning allows poultry. However, the presence of so many roosters and the constant cacophony that they bring is denying our right to a peaceful domicile. We can no longer keep our windows and doors open, so we had to retrofit our house with air conditioning to survive the hot weather and sleep at night. Of greater concern is how this assault on our peace and quiet will affect our property values. I can't imagine anybody standing on my deck and saying, "Wow, what a great place to live." We're hoping the Board will consider and adopt an ordinance similar to the Solano County ordinance. And I would also like to add that my wife woke up this morning not feeling well, and I really believe that it's the stress of this whole situation. She can't sleep in our bedroom this morning because of the noise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Jobe. My husband, Bob Jobe, we live in the county. Built our home on North Ridge in 1991. We've raised our children there. So I have the same issue with the noise. We live adjacent to Adina Nance. However, half of our property, over five acres, has become unusable. We had our horses in a pasture adjacent to Adina's property, but when we learned that the dogs were roaming free, we moved our horses into temporary pens off of our driveway. And that's where they are. They are performance horses. They're worth a lot of money. We know the dogs are vicious because my daughter rode up the road, which we've regularly ridden up the road for her whole life, and one of the dogs went to attack her on her performance horse. The neighbor grabbed it just in time, but we know they roam free, and we cannot have our horses mauled at night by these vicious animals. So these dogs that are protecting this multitude of roosters and this cacophony are ruining our property also and its value. A neighbor who lacks compassion to realize or recognize that these roosters and all this noise is no big deal to him, he doesn't care about us, he's not going to care if he mauls our horses with his dogs. It's going to be our responsibility, not his. And so we've taken, you know, aversive action, but it's really not fair that we have this private nuisance of not using half of our property now. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Del Chase. I've lived in the county a long time. I'm also adjoining property to the rooster situation. And I don't have a lot to say. These other people have brought many, many points to the forefront. My point to everybody here, the powers-to-be, as I call them, is my interest is in an ordinance. Ordinances are not easy. I know that. I've seen plenty. We have to address this problem. I've personally witnessed my dog be mauled by the neighbor's dogs that he has to protect these chickens, and I filed criminal complaints with the district attorney's office. It's a slow grind through animal control and legal status to get the vicious dog titled to them, which is, I don't blame the dogs, I blame the owner. He just doesn't seem to be responsible. I had a repeat offense after promising. I just want to leave you with one thought. I want, you know, I'm not going to take my full two minutes. If you would each take just a second and think, what would you do tonight and tomorrow and every day from here on out if when you went home after a long day, the new neighbor next door had over 100 roosters? And it was all night long, all day long, every day, and accompanied with vicious dogs? It's a situation. It's new to this county. We don't have a rooster ordinance. I would compel everybody, the powers-to-be, to take a look at the Solano County and be ahead of the curve rather than behind. There are residents of this county that have lived here a long, long time that are very much adversely affected by this, and it's not good.
Thank you. Board consensus on extending public comment period? Okay. Thank you.
Are you talking on the same subject?
No, sir. I don't have a rooster.
Okay. I just, excuse me, I'd like to interrupt you just a minute. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I must confess, I've been up there three times and witnessed exactly what these people are talking about. What they didn't tell you, that Mr. Chase's dog was attacked on his property, mauled, and nearly killed by these dogs that were in the, so the dogs, there's two problems here, the vicious dogs and the noise. They have provided us with a package that I looked at.
So we can't take action on this?
I understand, but I'd like to refer this to county council and CRA to see if we can do anything with a rooster ordinance.
CRA or the?
Well, whoever's appropriate. They gave us enough copies that I think we can get the appropriate departments involved.
All right. Yes, sir.
I just want to be real quick. My name is Steve McClintock. Want to introduce myself. I am the new fire chief in Mewoc Village. I look forward to working with everybody. I don't know how long I'll be at this meeting. When you see me slip out, you know I have to leave. So anyway, thank you.
Welcome.
I didn't do it.
You're going to do it. You have a fairly powerful auxiliary up there, and you have a fundraiser coming up.
Yes, we do.
So please announce that.
September 1st is the spaghetti feed fundraiser, and we would love to have everybody show up. Since I got here in May, I've been gone to Nevada most of the time on wildland fires. We do have a new water tender that should be here Monday or Tuesday to fill in our fleet. We're excited about that. We have crews down in the Mendocino Complex, and we have crews over on the other fire by Yosemite as well. So we're moving quite, we're moving forward fast. We have a great working relationship with Cal Fire and with all the other neighboring departments, and I just, it's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you.
They have a very effective fundraising group that other groups could learn from. So I want to thank Mr. Pedro. He came to the city council meeting last night, and I thought he was the only person who had something intelligent and problem-solving to say. We really need to applaud in this county Laura Krieg and Stefanie Novelli, who were just amazing recently in a big case, and we didn't have to, we didn't have a mistrial, we didn't have to have a change of venue, and I'm very impressed with them. And then Mr. Pulley, our sheriff, I think, deserves some kudos for withstanding kind of the vitriol that I thought was thrown at the firefighters and our law enforcement last night, and hopefully our community can be a little more courteous and polite and respectful when people come to save your lives and your property. And then I really want to thank Clark Broadcasting. H Randolph Holder actually went on the air one day and admitted that he was wrong, so I applaud that. And then they finally did a mother, oh, I shouldn't say finally, excuse me. They did a program on mental health, and they had Michael Wilson on as the director of behavioral health, and I thought it was the best program I've ever heard on Mother Load Views. And I thought he was amazing at getting a lot of information out, and I still would like a program on suicide prevention. So the only criticism I would have is that he said several times to look at the website or call the number, and then nobody gave the website address or the phone number. So if you would like to reach behavioral health or the crisis number, it is 209-533-7000. And if you'd like to reach Michael Wilson, he is at 209-533-6245. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pedro, I do have a question on the air quality resolution. Can we put that together with?
I don't believe that requires ratification. He can do that as the air pollution control officer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are two items I'd like to have you add to today's agenda, both slated at 11 o'clock. Both rose subsequent to the posting of the agenda and that the Donnell Fire really got going since the agenda was posted, and there is urgency to address both. And let me read them. First would be consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the local state of emergency as proclaimed by the board chair, OES director, on August 5th, 2018, due to the Donnell Fire as required by the California Emergency Services Act, Article 14, Section 8630B. And the second item would be consideration of ratifying the local health emergency as proclaimed by the county health officer and director of environmental health regarding the threat to public health from hazardous waste in the area encompassed by the Donnell Fire.
Okay, so need a motion?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Royce, second by Supervisor Rotifer. Public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just to mention for everyone, at 11 o'clock, the reason we're doing this is they were doing their briefings up at Dodge Ridge this morning. They needed time to get down here so they could do a good presentation for the board.
Okay. All right. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, then passes 5-0.
4-0.
Oh, excuse me, 4-0. Supervisor Brennan absent. All right. Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Minutes of the meeting held July 17th, 2018, approving the amendments to the Conflict of Interest Code for the Tuolumne County Assessor Recorder Human Service Agency and Behavioral Health. Adopting resolutions continuing the little local state of emergency as required by California Emergency Services Act, Article 14, Section 8630C, due to weather and flooding and also due to tree mortality, pervasive tree mortality. Authorizing counties' participation in the state surplus property program. Authorizing, approving correspondence to the California gubernatorial candidate requesting they divert resources away from the California Water Fix. Authorizing staff to initiate a call for projects of the 2018 cycle of community development block grants. Approving amendment number nine to the Tuolumne, to the community development block grant subrecipient agreement with Amador County Community Action Agency, the Food Bank, Homeless Services, and admitting the subrecipient agreement with Area 12 Agency on Aging for the Meals on Wheels. Awarding the agreement with ascent environmental, for environmental services related to the national disaster resiliency competition, Community Resilience Center project. Approving the discharge of accountability for 10 accounts totaling $27,388.76 in the ambulance enterprise fund in accordance with Government Code 25259. And approving the appointment of Joanne Raskin to the Tuolumne County Commission on Aging.
Board wish to pull anything on the consent calendar? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Move on the consent calendar. Motion by Supervisor Rotifer, second by Supervisor Handvelt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, 0. Passes 4-0 with Supervisor Brennan absent. Clerk, please read the next item.
Number 12 is, can, oh, number 12 has been pulled and won't be heard at a later date. Number 13 is consideration of accepting the Tuolumne County 2017 agricultural report.
Good morning again. Same person, Gary Stockel, wearing a new hat, Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and I'm here to present our 2017 annual agricultural report for Tuolumne County. Pleased to note that our 2017 gross value of agricultural production this year was over $37.6 million, representing a 6.1% overall increase from our 2016 value, which was $35.4 million. Notably amongst, across our category totals, we did see some changes, some percent changes. Our miscellaneous fruit and vegetables increased to $717,000, a 34% increase, mainly a result of near-normal rainfall the last two years. Our field crops did increase to $4.4 million, a 10.1% increase, and that's mainly driven by an increase of the value of our range land, again attributed to some better-than-our-recent history rainfall. Apron nursery is $244,000, a 34.6% decrease mainly attributed to fewer Christmas trees harvested. And our livestock and poultry, a 4.9% decrease to $21.5 million. We did have some higher prices for our livestock, but overall had some lower weights and fewer head went to market. Timber harvested is up 37% to $10.6 million, primarily pushed by our biomass going to cogeneration plants locally here from our tree mortality impact within the county. And so that gets us to our 6.1% increase. This year, we did feature, have a featured article talking about our high country summering of cattle and our, throughout our report, we have the wonderful photos provided by Terry Arrington. And so on the front cover, you see those photos, and if you start on the left, you see the trip that the cattle take from the low country, and you follow it up to the top to the high country. So each of those photos is representing a specific activity that's involved with our annual cattle movement from low country range to high country range. And in the scientific parlance, this is called transhumance, when livestock and people move together from one geographic location to another. Don't remember that, but it's just a point to note. I do, I do want to comment that our high country cattle men and women are being impacted heavily, as many of our current, our community is, by the Donnell Fire. That's why member Sheri Brennan is not here present today, because she's moving her cattle on a high country grazing allotment to a safer location as we speak. That may be within allotment, or they may be brought back down to the lower country, but we have many of our families, our ranching families impacted by that fire. So not only, you know, good thoughts to our firefighters on the line, the community that's interested in their property that may be lost in our recreational area there above Donnell, but also our cattle men and cattle women. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. Carl?
Yeah, Gary. I noticed from the data that you provided that the single driver really on the decrease in livestock and poultry was calves. Everything else was positive. Is there any single issue that's driving the calves' production, and is it something that we can have any, I won't say control, but influence over?
No single issue, no. I believe our cattle men and women adjusted their herd sizes as we were going through drought, and so they are not increasing their herd size to any great degree at this point. We still could go into a drought pretty easily again.
Okay. And just for the public's information, there are a couple of lots grazing allotments up there that have been burned over, so we don't really have any feedback yet on what the impact might have been to cattle that might have been there or might not have been there. We just don't know. But there are a couple of grazing allotments that got burned over.
Any other questions? Any public questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is your last one, right?
Yeah, this is my last report.
Clerk, please read. Oh, do we have, motion to accept?
Show moved.
Motion by Supervisor Rotifer, second by Supervisor Royce. Any public comment?
Back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, then passes 4-0. Posed, then passes 4-0 Supervisor Brennan absent. Clerk, please read the next item.
Okay, number 14 has been pulled also, and then we're going to go on to number 15. Do you want to do that, or do you want to do 16?
Let's do 16.
Okay. So 16 is the second reading and consideration of adopting an ordinance repealing Section 1004050f and amending Section 10040406 and 07 and 09 to implement traffic speed studies recommended for Phoenix Lake and Salisburyville Road, and to correct some clerical errors.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Careful with me. So this is our second reading. This is increasing the speed limit on Phoenix Lake Road and on Salisburyville Road. We understand that this is difficult for your board to make these decisions, and as we move in producing these, in order to complete that cycle as shown in the flow chart, to keep the enforcement and the courts to be able to pursue the violators with these speeding issues, we need to close this gap and approve the ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions, this is the second reading.
I'm looking, any questions? No questions, looks like.
I just have a comment. I think the, a large portion of our public is unaware of the mechanics and what happens when you do a speed study. It's usually not, most people want us to do speed studies because they think people are driving too fast and they want to lower the speed limit. The state law in California requires us, the underlying principle is that a good speed limit is one that conforms to the normative behavior. So very typically, we do indeed find people that are, when we do a speed study, that are driving above the speed limit, but then the result of the speed study is we're required then to raise the speed limit to that, that conforms to that normative behavior, and this is, it's a, I don't know what the right term is, but it's, it's really almost counterintuitive, but that's the way it works in California. So when you've got people speeding through your neighborhood, be careful, talking to our staff about doing a speed study, because it's probably not going to end up the way you like it.
Any other questions? Would you like to respond?
No, I just wanted to let, you know, I did a little research, and sorry, I was flipping through my pages. Phoenix Lake first originally had a speed study back in 18, or, excuse me, 1989, so we have to continue this cycle and monitor those speeds, as well as Salisburyville was back in 2004 when it began.
Cars weren't as fast then. Okay, this, public comment?
Don Taylor in Groveland, my comment, or my question is, what are we, what, why can we not have your local citizen using one of those handheld radar guns start nailing these speeders? Basically, I've been told by CHP that, well gee whiz, we can't issue a ticket based on what you're done, even if I'm going to show up in, in court and verify that I took it like that. I think we don't have enough police force to enforce these laws. They're useless if they're not enforced, and if the citizens could have some way of feeding into it to help out, rather than having a speed study, let's do a gotcha study. Thank you.
One of the issues on the speed study, studies are, we're obligated to do them, and we have to hire an engineer to, that's qualified to do it, and I don't know how many public individuals are qualified to do it. I took your approach in Groveland, I borrowed a radar gun from Darren Grossi here a few years ago, did my own speed study, and that's how we got the speed limit reduced in there. But that was, took a lot of extra work to do it.
You don't enforce.
Well, I'm going to tell you, there were, there were, there was maximum enforcement on 120 over the last, last week or so. I saw the highway patrol regularly, and I think on three occasions, the blue lights were flashing, so they were doing a good job last week.
I agree.
But, yes.
I want to thank Mr. Rutherford for bringing that up, because I know of three speed studies where the speed limits went up, and not to our betterment. So I would like to have some discussion, I know that this may be changing, there was an assembly bill, and I can't remember the number, I don't know if you remember. I want to say like 2643 or something like that, that's been introduced, where the communities would be able to take back control of the speed limits on their roads and alter that 85%. So, once we find out about it and where it is, I hope we write some letters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make the, the motion, because I think we have to, we don't have a choice, but the motion, current staff says we should adopt the ordinance amending the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code by repealing Section 10.04.050 (f), and amending Sections 10.04.060, 10.04.070, and 10.04.090, to implement traffic speed study recommendations for Phoenix Lake Road and Salisburyville Road, and to correct clerical errors based upon the following findings, A and B.
All right, motion by Supervisor Handveldt, second by Supervisor Royce, all those in favor? Aye. Posed, none, passes 4-0 Supervisor Brennan absent. All right. Listen, you want to do 15 reports? Get it done? Okay.
Reports.
Supervisor Rutherford.
I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Royce.
Yeah, the only thing I want to mention is, I wanted to thank all the, all the first responders, all the people that attended the Pinecrest Town Hall that they had last night. Unfortunately, I think the news is not what we want to hear, there's not enough resources to go around, and that's exactly what we need, but unfortunately, there's fires all across the state, all across the country, and it's very limited. I want to compliment Bill Pooley and the Sheriff's Office on the job that they did in handling the evacuations. It's a very, very challenging, difficult situation to go up there with people scattered throughout the woods, camping and hiking and fishing, and trying to round them up and protect them, keep them safe when that fire's coming through as fast as it did, so they deserve a lot of admiration for what, what they did to, to help people up there. And I know that it's devastating that Donnell's is gone, and a lot of people are losing cabins that they've had in their families for 100 years. And so I know there's, it's, we were texting back and forth, and I feel helpless, like there's nothing I can do, but I just want to encourage everybody, our staff, and really, anybody that can do anything to help us get more resources on that fire. I know that Congressman Clintalk, and even Shelley from Senator Feinstein's office were up there, we were talking with them, trying to do what we can, and every single private resource and public resource is basically dispatched on the fires. I would like to see maybe, the only thing I could come up with to try to do more is to get more private resources and expedite ways to sign people up. I know there's a process for inspections and all those types of things to get people on the list, but for staff, OES, anybody if we can help, just keep pushing, to be creative, to find resources, that's what we need, so, thank you.
Supervisor Handveldt.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one comment to what Supervisor Royce just said, can't stand up about our law enforcement and firefighters. Some of your law enforcement team stayed in long enough that they had to go back out, the backside of the mountain and come around. I mean, you talk about dedication, commitment, and putting yourself at risk, our law enforcement guys are just unbelievable, unbelievable, and Neil, I hope you pass that, that information on, we really appreciate what they're doing. We also appreciate our own firefighters, I want to compliment Craig, Craig took the initiative, and he called all the supervisors and told them what he was doing. He sent our units up to do structural protection. That was a bold decision, and, and the right decision, and I want to give him a lot of credit for that. This fire is, is a big deal. So, other things to report, a little more positive nature of things, about a week and a half or so ago, RCRC sponsored this program, I've talked about it before, where we gave every, every single high school and above age, age foster kid in the state, rural counties in the state, laptop computer and the training, so that the, their chance to survive as they emancipate increases dramatically, and it was a privilege to be there, I want to thank the courts for allowing me to be there, because most of this is pretty confidential, but we gave away 23 in this county, and I'm hoping that RCRC will continue that program. I also attended the tour when Secretary Zinke was here, it's good to make those contacts, and I think he's definitely on, on the rural county side of this thing. I also attended the Central Sierra Economic Summit, which happened to be in Calaveras County, it was sponsored by Central Sierra Economic Development District, and I'm just really proud to say that motherload job training got a big grant there from the Department of Agriculture for some of the work they're doing, and I want to say that we are blessed to have Dave Tenny and Larry Yanni running that operation and going after these things. They've changed the game for motherload job training, making it relevant in our community and making a difference, that's a big deal. The final thing I want to tell you is that as of a couple of days ago, I am now set up to meet with the Chief of the US Forest Service, Vicky Christensen, at her request, for a one-on-one on September 7th, so I'll be collecting information from other, others that are more knowledgeable than I perhaps, but to carry the message for rural counties in California and, and forestry. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Pedro.
Just a couple of things. First, just a reminder, the office is still, back to the day-to-day stuff, we've got a budget that we're still working on, our final budget, and working with the Auditor Controller's Office, who's trying to close books, and we'll have a discussion on August 21st in preparation for our final hearing, to kind of give the board a high level, how are we ending the year, and what are the issues that we see coming into your hearing, and then at the first meeting in September, that's when you'll actually have your budget hearing. But anyway, we're all working together, you know, to do those kinds of things. I did attend the city council meeting li, last night, fortunately Darren Grossi could convey better than I could some comments that Sherri had on a transit station that was being considered last night, and I'll just stop there. The other thing I was there to do was just to listen in on the discussion, discussion related to the grand jury report on the Tuolumne County Economic Development Authority, and I would just summarize, again, we don't, you know, we can do a full thing in, in upcoming meetings, I know the city council was definitely in favor of proceeding and addressing the management audit concerns raised, you know, by the grant, you know, the grand jury. I did offer something that I haven't even had opportunity to share with the full board yet, but trying to figure out how to get the most, the greatest expertise on this issue that's available in the state of California, and do it in a timely manner and at the less, least cost, something I will be coming back another day to present formally to the board, is to use the, the California Association of Local Economic Development, there is no greater expert in the field of local economic development in the state, and have them help in the areas of best practices in general, and there's a number of things that's addressed in the report, but specifically when it comes to coming up with metrics, things that can measure the performance of the organization, and, and there are issues that relate to some practices and policies related to travel and expenses that were raised, there are legitimate issues that need to be addressed, and suggest that we use a team of people, including folks like our auditor controller, who was specifically mentioned in the grand jury report, myself, the city manager, and council, and to come back and have a recommendation of some more specific policies for the EDA board to consider and adopt in a public forum, and then stick to them on the issue of, of what can be disclosed, there's a privacy issue there, that's a touchier issue, while the CAL Ed can discuss what practices are out there in the state, there's a very specific legal aspect to that, and said we'll just need to defer to council on those kinds of things. And I would agree the way that the city administrator put it, is, you know, if it's possible that we can get the same result through that effort to address the grand jury's concerns directly and completely, that that may be the way to address it, it's something that will be presented to the board, to the city council, you know, either do something like what I'm suggesting, or just a, a complete audit, though I think it's going to be hard pressed to find anyone more expert in this field than CAL Ed. So I was just there to convey that message, it was before having a chance to talk to your full board, though I had the green light from Chairman Gray to share those thoughts, so I did. And we, I won't talk about the Donnell fire, but I'll mention on the Ferguson fire, which is still very active over there, I just wanted to comment, that's a really tricky fire over there, there's a lot of communities that have been at risk, the terrain is awful, they've had, you know, weird weather to deal with, as some of these other fires have taken off in the state, they've also had resource demands, if you've been watching the reports, their resources have been dwindling, they've been, you know, peeled off to help with some of these other fires, but through it all, they've been able to keep things corralled over there without, with minimizing the damage to public and private assets. So I just want to acknowledge, that's a difficult fire, they've been doing a good job, the relationships we've built over the years with Forest Service and, and Park Service have definitely been in play and been helpful in trying to address, you know, the needs of Tuolumne County, and they've done a good job to keep it out of Tuolumne County, I wish the whole thing was out, and people are all back right now, concerned for the park, because I'm sure you are too, but they've been very attentive to the concerns that we've expressed, and want to thank them for that. And again, our Sheriff's Department's done a great job, they've been present, you know, from the beginning, our CAL Fire colleagues have also been there and helping advocate, provide information, and our office has also been going over, you know, as needed, and being on the phone constantly, you know, with the players to make sure that our concerns were being addressed, so I think they've, that's, we haven't talked a lot about that, but it's a very tricky fire, and I think they've done a pretty darn good job when you consider, you know, probably, arguably, the, the most significant iconic park in the system, you know, second, I don't know, there's always a little polite debate between Yellowstone and, and Yosemite, Yellowstone's second, okay, that's declarative right there. But, you know, it's, it's a beautiful thing, and it's a difficult thing, you've got to take care of the fire, you got to take care of public safety, but they've, they've got a tiger by the tail, you know, over there, they've done a good job.
Thank you. County Council? Clerk? Okay, so mine will be relatively short, because Mr. Pedro did a really good recap of the fires, I've spent lots of hours the last few weeks on, on the fire issues and meeting with people, the communication between CAL Fire, the park, the US Forest Service, Sheriff's Department, everybody's done a wonderful job of coordinating the information that's going out. I think in the Rim Fire, we learned that a lot of the information that went out was not good information, and now, you know, with the, with the help of all those agencies, we're getting a lot of good information out. It, it's sad to see what's happened to the, to the businesses on the corridor, you know, 120 is, is basically a ghost town. Last night, I was up at Pinecrest, and, you know, 108 usually bustling this time of year, very, very few businesses doing anything, and, you know, it, it's going to take time to recover from that. You know, the losing the Donnell's, losing the cabins up there, as Supervisor Royce said, is, is terrible, those are lifelong relationships with, with, with that area that those people had, so it's very sad. relationships with, with, with that area that those people had. So it's very sad. We'll get through this, but boy, this is tough. You know, this is something that, that I don't, I don't think that, that the person that lives in the big city really realizes what we go through up here. You know, this is where they recreate. This is where they get their water from. This is where they get their timber and wood from. And we live here and we enjoy it, but it really has a major effect on us. We'll get through it. We're tough. We're resilient, but it's, this is a real tough one. So with that, that's the end of the reports. Any, anything else before I ask the Clerk?
I just, I want to add a kudo. Supervisor Handveld said some stuff, but I want to add a kudo to, to CIO Pedro.
Absolutely.
His aggressive pursuit of unified command resulted in us going unified command, I believe, last night at six o'clock. That's very, very important because it gets CalFire involved up there in, in the, in the command structure. And I'll just leave it at that, but it was a very, very important move. And Craig, you've done an incredible job with limited resources in your own office, dealing with, really dealing with three fires because you also had the Parrot's Fire going on, although that's kind of calmed down a little bit. But good job.
Great. All right. Clerk, please read our closed session item.
This is closed session conference with labor negotiators. Sarah Correio, County Council, authority government code section 549, 57.6, unrepresented employee county administrator.
Okay. Do we expect to report anything out? No? Okay. Any public comment on the closed session item? Seeing none. Closed session. We'll be back for our 11 o'clock appointment. Okay. Like we convened a board of supervisors meeting and we're going to have our 11 o'clock appointment. Who's, Tracy, are you going to handle all this for us? Do you want to read it?
Okay, I'll read the first one. And this is consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the local state of emergency as proclaimed by the Board Chair and Office of Emergency Services Director on August 5th, 2018, due to the Donnell Fire as required by the California Emergency Services Act, Article 148630B.
All right. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good morning. Tracy Riggs, County Administrator's Office. With me this morning, we have the Sheriff and Scott with the Forest Service and Josh White, our Fire Chief. So this will be a combined effort between many of us to give you an update. And then, of course, if you have any questions, we welcome those and we'll do our best to get those answered. So I passed out a few handouts that are in front of you. The first one that I'd like you to look at is the proclamation of a local state of emergency that the Supervisor, that Supervisor Gray signed on Sunday evening. That allowed us to proclaim a local state of emergency that does need to be ratified within seven days. And so that's what we're asking you to do today. And Donnell Fire started last week. It has burned, last I heard this morning, approximately 13,000 acres. And that is a, a number that, because they couldn't do the IR flight last night, and I'll defer to Scott on some of that. Anyways, they're focusing on structures, which is exactly what all of us want them to do. What I want to do before deferring to my colleagues here is just give you a general update of what our office has been doing in conjunction with everyone else, just so that you and our, and the members of the community are aware of that. So when the fire started, thankfully, Sheriff and his wife were on the way up the hill, happened to walk in just to check in and heard we need to call the sheriff. He has perfect timing. He was there and didn't get to leave for many hours after that. So again, blessed to have staff who just, and, and our, our other colleagues and coworkers who are amazing and concerned and out there. As a result, we did open shelter and the shelter was available not only for those who were up the 108 corridor, but were also for the Parrot's Ferry Fire. We made that available for them as well. Thankfully, there was no one who needed to use it. That shelter was closed yesterday afternoon. But again, Red Cross was there. Debbie Calco is amazing. And whatever we ever need, she's willing to step up and help us out with that. So we have, staff have been attending the briefing that's been going on, starting on Sunday morning. So I've been going up there with Jason and Daniel went with me this morning. And of course, our Sheriff and fire personnel have already been up there. Then those are taking place every morning up there and that they're well attended and they give out some great information. We are starting a JIC, which is a Joint Information Center. You have a handout for that. It gives you the phone numbers. We have also provided those to local media. That phone number is 533-5800. And what that is, very much like the Rim Fire, we are providing a place for people to call non-emergent calls where they can get information. So that is being staffed by some of the sheriff's staff and the community service unit volunteers. And we're very thankful that everyone, again, is willing to come together. And we're hoping that maybe we can take some of those non-emergent phone calls off of dispatch so that they are able to, to really focus on those that are needing help right away. And I'm just looking down. We've also been coordinating with Alpine County. So the Supervisor Terry Woodrow over there, we're making sure whatever we send you, we're also sending her, just so she knows the movement and what's taking place. And then we did provide her contact information to the Ops Chief up there, Bob Newman, so that he could also provide information directly to their county. And from what I understand, he was saying he thought maybe it was, was moving that direction. But again, Scott will know more about that than me. We're also talking about Highway 108 and signage so that people who are either coming up over the side from the 395 area, it's closed at the Pass is what Caltrans confirmed to me today. And then there is signage clear starting out down at Salisburyville, just warning people that there is a fire up there. It's not closed until you get to Eagle Meadows. But we want people to know that they can't go all the way over, that there, there is some limitations. And we also want to make sure that we don't limit all the traffic completely because all of the businesses are still operating up until that point. So, and we did, there was also a public meeting yesterday. That was well attended, Forest Service, Sheriff, lots of partners up there. They did our county fire. They did a fantastic job. I think there was 500-plus people. And they do plan to have additional meetings. Those will be announced in the future. And also, one last thing, we do also, Forest Service has been working and collaborating with those who have allotments for cattle up in that area. Very important. They've been taking them in there, escorting them in. They're aware of their movement. They're coordinating with them several times a day. So that's been fantastic. And with that being said, I'm just looking to see if I forgot anything. I'm sure I have. We did borrow sat phones, so satellite phones from our Public Health Department, provided those to us so that we could get them to our county fire. So when they're out and about, hopefully those will provide some coverage where they don't otherwise have it. And with that, what I'd like to do is defer to, I'll just go down the line to the Sheriff and down to Fire.
So the Sheriff's Office has been engaged in this since Thursday. Our, as you know, our primary task is to make sure we make all of the announcements and make sure the evacuations are done properly. As far as I know, everybody has gotten out of the area safely. There's not been, no one reported missing. So that we're very grateful. Kudos to our staff, all the fire staff. And to be quite honest, the neighbors that went next door and checked on their neighbors and made sure they were out of there. It was absolutely a community effort to get everybody out of there. It worked fantastic. And, you know, we're already working with fire, the fire team up there to mark our trigger points. Should the fire continue to spread, what evacuation advisories we might need to do, we're setting all that in place today. We feel like we're very prepared to do any other evacuations, but we might need to. They did close the PCT, PCT trail. We contacted CHP. Thanks to them, they used their helicopter, flew the trail. We were able to locate 15 hikers, notify those folks to go ahead and get on out of there. It went very well. We, as Tracy said, we have hard closures at Eagle Meadows and at the Pass. We are issuing very limited passes to those permotees that have cattle in the area or heavy equipment, things like that, that need to get out of there on a limited basis. If someone in the public needs to get those types of items out there, please contact the Sheriff's Office and we'll assist you. Let me look at my notes, see if I have forgotten anything. That's good. Questions?
Good morning, Supervisors and Staff. My name's Scott Tangenberg. I'm the Deputy Forest Supervisor for the Stanislaus National Forest. I'm prepared to provide an operational update as of today. I don't know if you've already received one in terms of the fire status. Okay, great. So without taking a microphone with me and playing Vanuahite on the, the map up there, oh, I do have, oh.
Very good.
Much, much rather point to portions of the map and help people with geography as I provide this update. So, fire started here on the edge of Donnell Lake a few days ago. And then when we experienced the weather shift on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that's when fire made an incredible run with the wind pushing it, with the fuels as dry as they are, with the temperatures as high as they were, and with the alignment of the canyons, this Clark Fork Canyon and as well as the Middle Fork of the Stanislaus River Canyon, saw growth rates unprecedented, particularly at this high elevation. So very, very extreme fire behavior. At this present time, the fire, although it shows red all the way around, that's more of an indication of our official containment status, as opposed to the amount of active fire that's actually burning around those perimeters. Fire did make its way up and around the west side of the Dardanelles here. And it does have heat in it and still has potential to continue to grow in this direction. This section of the fire along the northern edge actually ran up against the boundary of the McCormick Fire that burned up there last year and has very much run out of fuel along that northern edge. So the Division Bravo has basically been unstaffed, mostly because of its lack of activity, but also because the opportunity for growth in that direction is basically up into the rocks of the Dardanelles and in the wilderness. Along the southern edge of the fire, there is some growth and it's south of Highway 108 at this point. But due to the shift in weather back to a more stable pattern, much less wind, much less clear air, particularly last night, fire only expanded about 300 acres from the official amount of 11,000 acres. Fire did engage multiple structures along the Highway 108 corridor in the area of the Dardanelles, Brightman, and has continued to the east a little ways. An incredible firefight was, was engaged here, attempting to defend those structures. And many structures were saved by the efforts of our brave men and women out there on the ground. However, many structures were also lost in that corridor, mostly recreational cabins that are owned by permit holders with the Forest Service, as well as the Dardnell Resort. We continue damage assessment work to figure out exactly what the extent of that loss is. And our intent is to make direct contact with every permotee who has a cabin or a feature up here and to let them know, one way or the other, what we know for certain about the condition of their structure. Resources have been at a premium in terms of firefighters, crews, engines, helicopters, et cetera. In case anybody didn't notice, there's a lot of fire activity, not just across California, but across the entire West. And yet we have, through the unified command setup that we established with Tuolumne County and the Sheriff, been able to motivate some additional resources to come to the fire. And I'll let Chief White speak to that in a little bit. Those additional resources that have arrived are working still at making sure that the structures that are past the flaming front do not ignite on rekindles or stray embers, as well as providing structured defense actions along the unaffected structures up the Highway 108 corridor. Things like limbing up, pulling debris away from the edges of things, in some instances, building fire line around structures. That actions, those actions are also taking place along private structures and permitted cabins on the 5N01 road, also known as the Eagle Meadow Road. They've got resources in there implementing structure protection measures in case the fire does turn south, runs up Eagle Canyon with some alignment with wind and topography and potentially affect those. And I'm also aware of actions being taken in the area of Kennedy Meadows to defend that facility, as well as Baker Station, our research facility that we operate in conjunction with Columbia College, and basically every other private and public structure across the Highway 108 corridor. Up the Clark Fork, this run occurred on those windy days. I've gotten reports that features such as the Peaceful Pines Camp and the other campgrounds, et cetera, that are up the Clark Fork have been very successfully defended and are in very good shape. There is still active fire up here and there is still potential for it to continue to grow that way because we are committing our limited resources to the structured defense effort. Once we get that well in hand and the threat to structures has passed, that's when the incident and the resources we have available will commit to perimeter control and trying to actually stop the forward progression of this fire. With that, I'm prepared to hand it back over to Chief White.
Very good, Deputy Supervisor. That was a fantastic rundown on what the fire's doing. What I'd like to do is go back in time a little bit and talk about what the fire did on Sa- Sunday and then, excuse me, on Saturday and then Sunday. And what we like to do is look a little bit of the fire history so we can anticipate fire growth for the future. So on Saturday, the fire made essentially a five-mile run right up this middle canyon. And that also engaged these two spot fires that have, since then, have expanded. This confluence right down here on the south end, it was basically a straight line. So none of this had burned until Sunday. It then made that strong push with those winds that we were seeing. And that's when it pushed into this canyon. So based on that fire behavior, once we had additional resources, we were looking at Kennedy Meadows. At the fire growth of what we saw the previous two days, we anticipated that Kennedy Meadows would be impacted within 24 to 48 hours. That was over 24 hours ago and we saw very moderate fire growth yesterday. So the, the weather worked in our favor in, from the standpoint that we don't have the significant fire growth, the smoke was laid in, the high-pressure system just kind of put the damper on the fire. The bad news is, is we can't get aircraft in when that happens. The smoke level just hangs in. It's an unsafe environment for any of the pilots, whether it's fixed wing or the rotary. So this bought us some time. We have three engines, a battalion chief and a small hand crew, a, what we call shorthand crew. They're not short. It's just less people than a normal fire crew. There are firefighters off of our helitack crew. We weren't able to get them in in the copters. We brought them in in the utility vehicles. They're working all around Kennedy Meadows and continuing down to Indian Cliffs. There are cabins down around on the south side. And then also working out on the 108 corridor and working with the Forest Service resources that are out on the 108 corridor. Coming down here to the 5N01, we have a strike team of dozers, as well as a strike team of engines from CalFire that are currently working in here with other Forest Service resources that are just identifying all of the different cabins, doing the prep work, coming up with the pre-plan. This is a lot of rugged territory between the fire and the 5N01. What we have to identify is where's our opportunities of engagement? Where can we go in and go direct? If we're going to have this continued moderate fire growth, it's time for us to look at opportunities to go in, either go direct or indirect and cut the fire off before it ever impacts 5N01. Or if we get back into an environment where there's some discussion as far as possible thunderstorms that could be coming in later than the week, which will result in erratic winds for us to deal with, that may be where we have to allow the fire move to a little bit closer to us. And then I'm going to be advocating for doing some firing operations and get the fire to burn north of 5N01. 5N01 has to be a control hold, a tow hold for us on the south side. We can't allow this to continue burning any further to the south. We need to tie off this western flank and wrapping around to the northwest corner as well. Ultimately, what this fire has shown us is it wants to continue to burn up into the wilderness. We want to allow that to happen as long as we can get through the structure threat. As long as we have a structure threat along the 108 corridor and the 5N01, Tuolumne County has to remain in unified command. If we can mitigate this threat, as soon as we accomplish that, then I think that it's, we'll be in a good... will be in a good position to be able to remove ourselves from unified command, but continue to assist the Forest Service. I have to say, kudos to the team that the Forest Service brought in. This team, the incident commander, has been very gracious and very forthcoming with information, very accommodating to us. If I have concerns, he mitigates those concerns right away, and everybody in his staff has the same exact appreciation for our concerns. Anything that I've brought to them, they make their priority, and so I just have to really give them a shout out. They're doing a great job, and I really appreciate of that open environment that we're working with, with the Forest Service. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions for the board? Okay. Any questions from the public? See no questions from the public? Go ahead.
Sorry, just wanted to follow up with, as you can tell, we have, once again, an incredible team of people who've come together to work on behalf of the community. And when you're up there, it really is incredible. It's such a blessing to have everyone there. The community, we know, supports everyone. What I did want to do is just kind of follow up with Craig. He has some other information that he'd like to share with everyone.
Yeah. This is really early, but just to mention, for those that have suffered loss, or hopefully there won't be any more, but in the event there is, we do have programs. The Assessors Office is already working on property tax relief, you know, for people who have suffered loss. And in our Community Resource Agency, they're chomping at the bit to provide whatever assistance they can in the event we get into the, you know, plans to rebuild, repair, and do that as quickly as we can. And some of that does have to be certainly in conjunction with the, you know, the Forest Service, and Scott and I briefly discussed that, and we'll try to pave the way on that as well, just looking forward. And I don't know if David wanted to say anything in that regard.
For the members of the public, my name is David Gonzalez. I'm the Community Resource Agency Director. I am very lucky and fortunate to be in charge of most of the building and planning operations over at our CRA building. So, we've been reaching out through my association, through the CalBO group, and looking for teams standing by, ready to help people do the inspections, this safety assessment inspections through that system. We're working with CAL OES, and at the same time, we're also preparing for the recovery. My team will work closely with the forestry to make sure that our folks that are impacted will get the priority to make sure we get them back with our short construction season up there. It's even shorter than down lower. We will do our best to make sure those folks that are impacted and want to get on the ground can get back in there. So, we're standing by, ready. We are chomping at the bit a little bit. We'd like to see this thing out and go into the recovery mode, but that will happen in good time. They're in good hands, and want to make sure that the folks out there understand that we're here for them. We cannot do anything just yet. We will wait until the command has settled this and the fire is out. But our number at Community Resources is 533-5633. Be happy to help folks, but please stand by until the fire is out before you start that next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Chief?
Okay, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that we're in our first week of August. This is a marathon, not a sprint. We have a long ways to go through the remainder of this fire season. I really have to emphasize that people need to be very cautious with fire. In the last two days, we've had over 400 acres burn over in Calaveras. We've been very fortunate in Tuolumne County to have limited ignitions over here, but I also have to emphasize that people need to make sure that their homes are defendable, that they're fire-ready, that they have their 100-foot defensible space. Supervisor Hanfelt has a great house to use as a demonstration if anybody wants to drive by and look at it. It was, it is one that I like to take pictures of and show off as what people need to be working with.
Josh, you host tours and does barbecues for people, too.
Indeed. The wine tasting is fantastic.
Josh, can you go look at his office also and assess that for fire danger?
That would be within the jurisdiction of the Sonora Fire Department, so I will defer to Chief New.
Okay. Very good.
But in all seriousness, this, we are very limited for resources. We now have the state's largest fire incident in history, burning up in, across Lake County, from Mendocino through Lake into Kalusa, and they're talking about possibly even having to utilize Interstate 5 as a tow hold for that. We are in unprecedented times, and I hate saying that because I said after the Rim Fire that that was unprecedented, and we've seen year after year what is going to happen. People have to be cognizant. If somebody sees somebody doing something that is a fire threat, please call us. We will send somebody out there to talk to them, and that includes mowing dry grass. And, you know, we used to say, "Don't mow before or after 10:00 AM." If it's any time during the day now, if you're mowing dry grass, call us. We will send somebody out there to talk to them. We have to mitigate this threat. We've got a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. The sheriff just reminded me of something that is very important, just to remind everyone about Everbridge, which is our emergency notification system. And, once again, we have a way that we can access landlines. The only way we can get to cell phones is if people self-register, and that's not, the other way we can get to them is through our IPAS system, which is a system we use through FEMA that does a signal within a geographical area and will send it out. But also remembering that when individuals are in some of these areas where they're up camping and hiking, sometimes there is no signal. So, it's just, it's a difficult situation, but we are encouraging people to go in there and register. They can do up to 25 different ways that they want to be notified, from cell to pager to fax to email, and they choose how they want that priority to be. If someone's not sure how to do it, they can call our office, they can contact the sheriff's office. Either one of us can lead someone through on how to register, and more than happy to do so, but we do encourage everyone to get on that system, especially those who have chosen not to have landlines. We really need them to register.
Okay. Anything else? We've got, we have to bring it back to the board to do the resolution, and so what we'll need is a motion on a declaration of a local state of emergency. And after that, I want to open up public comment if I can get consensus of the board from earlier today. And then I would like to have the sheriff tell us what's going on at Railtown tonight, but we'll go ahead and do this. Oh, two items, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Gray, public comment should come before any board action.
Any, okay. Public comment on this item. I'm talking about open public comment for oral communication. Oral communication, I want to reopen that if I can, okay? All right. I have trouble getting this all straight down sometimes. Doesn't seem like it's complicated, but it is. Okay. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the resolution, affirm the resolution declaring a local state of emergency in Tuolumne County.
Okay, motion by supervisor, second by Supervisor Hanfelt. Public comment. Bring it back to the board. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Passes four zero. Supervisor Brennan absent. Next item.
This is consideration of ratifying the local health emergency as proclaimed by the county health officer and director of environmental health regarding the threats to the public health from hazardous waste in the area encompassed by the Donnell Fire.
Okay. Mr. Costlevi, you're walking slow so you didn't have to come up here, right?
Well, good morning, board. Rob Costlevi, environmental health. It almost seems like Groundhog Day here. Five years, one month, 10 days. I stood before you with a similar proclamation about the health emergency regarding the Rim Fire. So, today, as you heard from these presentations from Ms. Riggs and the fire and the Forest Service, we have an unprecedented situation in Tuolumne County. The Rim Fire roughly took 110 structures, 10 homes, 97, 98 outbuildings. If I'm correct, I think we're at 235?
Nothing.
Okay. We have a lot, we have a lot of structures that are burnt. We have a large resort, Dardanelles, that has been impacted. They have a 12,000-gallon underground storage tank, which has fuels in it, so that needs to be addressed. Any hazmat chemicals that were associated with the operations, propane. There was also the food service component of that, which can get contaminated and leach off into the environment and potentially contaminate, you know, wildlife that's out there that did survive that area. We're also looking at the various hazmats of the structures that were burnt down, not at Dardanelles, but the cabins. And from my past experience working in the Rim Fire, working in the Butte Fire, there's quite a bit of chemicals. There was munitions. There was just a lot of stuff that people collect, and, you know, that's one thing that we want to assess as well. And working with Dr. Bernstein, we thought a joint proclamation was the most suited for Tuolumne County in this situation. We're trying to get ahead of the curve on this. Like I said, last, during the Rim Fire, it was roughly three to four weeks before we came forward and asked for this proclamation. With the west burning as it is, resources are already stretched extremely thin. And, in fact, I contacted Cali PA yesterday to talk about getting things set up like we had with the Rim Fire, and they have no personnel. Everyone right now is being delegated to Shasta County for the car fire. So, we're trying to get ahead of the curve and get on that waiting list so we can get the personnel going. We have a call later on today with several of the other counties that offer mutual aid for the hazmat component that, as Mr. Gonzalez noted on his end with the building and planning, they have building inspectors that are on call, ready to come in. We're looking for the same thing, to get clearance for environmental health so we can clear these properties and do things correctly and get these, get these folks back into some sort of normality.
Any questions? Any public comment? Like I said earlier, you know, we are experienced with this.
That's the bad news.
And that is the bad news, you know? But we thank you for coming forward quickly and for everything all you guys do, you know? I don't know how we would survive, but thanks.
Supervisor Gray?
Yes?
I just want to point out one thing, that how this proclamation is different than the proclamation to do for a local state of emergency. The local state of emergency must come before you no less than every 30 days. This one will need to come before you no, it has to be at least every 14 days. So, as long as it's following within our board meetings will be good. If there's one time where it doesn't, we may have to ask, and it's being recommended by Dr. Bernstein and Rob, that it be continued, we may need to ask for a special meeting. And I also make sure that you knew that. It should follow, okay? We just don't know how long we'll need to keep this one going.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll move in favor of the joint, approving the joint proclamation of a local health emergency with the county environmental health director and the county health officer.
Second. Well, a motion by Supervisor Hanfelt, second by Supervisor Roderfer. I already asked for public comment. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Passes four zero. Supervisor Brennan absent. All right. So, thank you for all of that, and I'm going to open up the public, excuse me, oral communications portion, if I have consensus of the board, which I do. So, if anybody wants to come forward and speak under oral communications, please do
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Sorry, couldn't be here earlier this morning. We were in the meeting up the hill. So, tonight is National Night Out. It's designed to get the community out, get to know law enforcement, first responders. We're going to have a real special deal tonight down at Railtown, starts at 5:00. We're going to have a train ride. So, all of our deputies are going to get on the trains. We're going to have about 45-minute train ride, talk to the kids, give out some stickers and things like that, and basically just have a great evening visiting with the community, building those relationships. So, again, if you want to come down, be there by 5:00. Train leaves at 5:00. I was asked, I said, "I want to drive the train or I want to be in the caboose." So, those spots are taken for, spoken for. But it should be a lot of fun, so please come down and bring your families out.
We're going to have lights on the train and everything, sirens, you know?
If I had more time, I would. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Would anybody else wish to speak under oral communications while I've got it opened up?
Hello. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Sean Burdan. I'm 45 years old, and I'm from Sonora here. I'm glad to be here today, though I'm nervous, and to listen to you guys, learn what's going on here, and to share with you my concerns, what's going on. So, there's a couple of services that are Behavioral Health and the Enrichment Center that fall under your guys' budget guidelines. And so I just wanted to mention to you what's going on with regards to their services there. And with regard to the money that you guys spend and the services provided at Behavioral Health, I just want to touch base with you on the length of time that it takes for people like me to get in there and see a doctor, people that possibly are dual-diagnosed, that might have a mental health issue and/or something else going on. And my main concern is certainly the delays in getting service, and then the scheduling. As well, I just wanted to bring to light some stuff at the Enrichment Center. I just don't feel like it's very well managed. Again, for someone like me who's financially challenged and needs these services, they're lacking in many ways, and I can, I'd just like to briefly mention them. The computer availability, the lack of cleanliness in the bathrooms, the ability for someone who's homeless or about to be homeless to have shower availability. And so really, you know, again, I'm nervous, but I just want to talk about your money spent versus money well spent, and time spent versus time well spent. Anyways, I'm real nervous, and I'd just like for you to look into those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just going to mention, we have our human service agency director and assistant director in the back, and they could connect with you.
All right. Anybody else under oral communication?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to, this morning, you guys said a lot of cool things about what all these folks are doing.
They weren't here?
They weren't here.
They can go, they can go look at the video.
They could look at the video.
Well, I'll just start because it wasn't just this fire, but also related back to Ferguson and the good work that's going on there and the teamwork that's happened, and every one of your agencies and some of you guys personally has been mentioned, and, again, the relationship building that we've done and being able to call, you know, just pick up the phone and "I know this person" and all that, and everyone works together, listens, and, as I see, you know, Scott there, you know, it's like between you and Jason, we see these guys all the time, but you guys were lavished earlier as well. Neil just sat back there and seemed to sink down into his seat, didn't want to get up. But Jason, and you have done a great, you know, great job. Jason and I, you know, not to say anything negative about any predecessors, but he, you know, he's really been on top of this and on the phone and in his place, you know, you have as well. And again, Bill and his staff, Josh and his staff have, it's just been great. I mean, it's, these are bad situations, but it's really good to be able to pick up the phone and talk to people you know and you trust, and you can get some good work done.
Supervisor Ross?
Yeah, I'd love to add to that. And Craig, you just said the word "trust." I don't think, for me personally, over the years of being on this board, I have, you guys have earned my trust to where, when I first started, I questioned a lot of things, and I didn't trust you guys, especially the Forest Service, no doubt about it. But just being flat-out, you know, just transparent, you guys, I think you guys were really, really forthcoming at that meeting last night, and I appreciate that. As Craig said, both you and Jason have been outstanding. Jason's texted me information. You guys are available right there. Josh, same thing. The CAL FIRE guys are on top of you. You guys are the A-Team and absolutely the premier fire, you know, elite service that there is in the world, and having you guys out there protecting us is, there's, you know, I wish there was more of you, but I understand the challenges and the constraints of a world with finite resources. And Sheriff's Department, same thing. Brand-new guy on the block, you know, pretty much like being first day on the job, and you're on top of it. Absolutely phenomenal. And you personally being up there, I mean, that's a kind of a random coincidence, but... And you personally being up there, I mean, that's a kind of a random coincidence, but for you to just jump on it and get things done like that, I know it's a damn good thing that you were there. And beyond that, it's not just you guys. There's definitely a really good leadership team that we have across, across the board, all the first responders. But your people on the front lines are out there, and they're smart, and they know the countryside, they know our area and our people. And, you know, whether it's the sheriff's office, you know, accommodating people with cattle up in the high country, or, you know, Forest Service going through campgrounds, whatever it was, I just want to thank you guys. And I just want also, one more point. I know we were texting back and forth, the board, you know, we were trying, getting updates from Tracy, and I asked, you know, "Is there anything that we can or should, or is there anything else we can do?" And John said, "We worry. Staff gets the job done." And it's, it's flat out, I wish, I feel helpless up here. I feel like my hands are tied and there's not a lot I can do, but, you know, basically we just.
We're.
We're just to go between and console the public, try to, you know, help articulate things in terms people understand.
Royce, Royce, we're just a pretty face out there. These people are the people that do the work.
Yeah, speak for yourself. I don't know if I'm that pretty, but.
Supervisor Royce.
You're not pretty.
Thank, I just want to sincerely thank you guys and let you know that we support you and we have your back. And if there's anything that we can do, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Yeah, and everything he said, I'm not going to repeat it. But just, just for those people that really can't, for whatever reason, get their head around what's going on in this state, I just pulled up mymotherload.com, and the top four stories are four different fires in Calaveras and Tuolumne County right now. Okay? It's not just the Darnell Fire. They got the Ferguson Fire. We got the three other fires in Calaveras and Tuolumne County. So when we talk about resources being stretched thin, they are, there are some other things that, that people can look at doing at the state level. But the people that are on the ground and fighting these fires are highly trained specialists. I mean, they're, they're experts at what they do. It's not just easy to throw more manpower at that when they're not trained. All you're doing is putting those people at risk. And we got enough people at risk already. But congrats to everything, and thank you for everything that you all are doing. I don't know how you divine that you needed to be up there, Bill, but thank you for being there when it was needed. And I want to, I really want to highlight, from our county staff perspective, I want to highlight our CAO's office, because they've been going to multiple IC meetings every day, twice a day, with the Ferguson and the Darnell Fire. And so they're stretched a little thin, too. You notice we had a couple of board items pulled today. I don't know why they couldn't get to those, but anyway, thank you, Craig. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you to the entire CAO, EOC staff, and thanks to the Forest Service, the Sheriff's Department, and CAL FIRE.
Supervisor Hanfelt?
I don't know how I add to all that, but one of the things I was thinking about when you were up there, Mr. Sheriff, with talking about National Night Out, I wondered if we had any deputies available to be out there just to greet the public, because I know they're all working hard and doing extra work. And I want to comment what I said earlier for your benefit. I know, and I know, by the way, he's been here five years. His opening salvo here was Rim Fire. I mean, you had just arrived on the scene, I think, when Rim Fire hit us. And I don't know how many states of emergency we've had since then. I was looking it up, but we have many of them going on right now. I don't want to say we're cursed, but we have.
You're not blaming me for all those, are you?
No, I'm not, I'm not. But I wanted, wanted to comment what I said this morning. We know what your people do. I saw them during Rim Fire. I saw them going and doing extraordinary things for, and the firefighters, too, and the whole team going to extraordinary things during Rim Fire. But, you know, I read the report where some of your team had to go out the backside because they couldn't come home the normal way. I mean, they are putting themselves on the line for, and the firefighters are certainly doing that, and the Forest Service guys, and the whole team that backs them up, doing these extraordinary things. And I don't think the public fully understands the extent of the things that the team does. And I want you to carry the message back to the people out there on the line and tell them that we understand and we appreciate what they're doing. We understand the personal sacrifice, not only from the, being away from family, but the risk they put themselves at for the public, and that should not go unnoticed, and we do appreciate it. Having been out there with, with some of the teams in other fires out during active fire, I know what it's like. Josh and I stood on Mount Eden and watched the fight to St. Paper Cabin rage. I was up with Barry Rudolph during the Oak Fire, during active fire, and it, it's just not something that we want to take for granted, ever. You guys are amazing. And I want to add the comments about the CAO's office. You're far too experienced at this, unfortunately, but you're, you're always there and you do the sacrifice. They had mentioned Jason. I know, Jason, this is kind of your first baptism of fire, but I hope you don't have to get used to it. But we thank you for your efforts.
Okay, so lots said, and I certainly agree with everything that was said. My short note back to the board was on the worry issue, you know, staff's going to do the job, you guys know what to do, we're going to worry about it. But we worry less knowing what good jobs that you guys do out there. And I think what Supervisor Hanfelt said is really important, that it gets back to the people that are actually doing that work, that there is appreciation there. And, you know, this board, we've gone through a lot. We understand the problem, and we want, we want help if we can, and we don't want to hinder. So thanks again. With that, I'm going to do one more housekeeping thing and report out from closed session that we have nothing to report. And.
I said that earlier.
With that, thank you all, and have the rest of the day. Thank you.